Call the meeting to order. Good evening, my name is John Samia and I'm the Chair of the Shrewsbury Board of Selectmen. On behalf of my fellow board members in the Town Manager's Office, I want to welcome you to our February 22nd, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting. Tonight's live broadcast is brought to you by Mark Sierra of the Shrewsbury Media Connection. In addition to tonight's live broadcast on Channels 30 and 330 and Facebook, tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on the same channels from tomorrow until our next regularly scheduled meeting on March 8th, 2022. Finally, tonight's meeting also will be available via the Shrewsbury Media Connection on YouTube starting tomorrow, together with all the other previous meetings are also available on the same platform. First item on the agenda under preliminaries is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve minutes of February 1st, 2022, and February 8th, 2022.
Move approval.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item is announcements or reports. Any announcements this evening? I don't have any either, so on to the Town Manager's report, Mr. Mizikar.
Board members, before I get into the COVID update, I just wanted to note that I'm pleased to announce that the Shrewsbury Fire Department secured a grant for a little over $20,000 to replace turnout gear. So we've been very successful in the years on this grant, and just wanted to thank firefighter Mike Borowick and Deputy Chief and Fire Chief for continuing to pursue that and secure those funds on behalf of the town. I have no other updates beyond COVID-19, but can go there.
May I please go to COVID-19?
So we're seeing a marked improvement in the number of COVID cases. There's only been 106 since we last reported on February 8th. The previous two-week cycle was over 300 between your meetings, last meeting in January and the first meeting in February. We've only seen 40 cases in the last seven days, which is obviously less than 50% of the 14-day total. So we continue to report those cases out every Friday afternoon. The Town Hall is open to the public, it's fully staffed, and there's no mask requirement currently in place in town buildings. Unfortunately, there have been two additional deaths reported since we last updated the Board at your February 8th meeting, so that takes the total number of COVID-19 indicated deaths up to 80. You can see fortunately on the far right side of this total trend line from February 19th of 2020 that we're back down to only single-digit case counts per day, and we've seen that trend continue this week, and we're very grateful for that. Here is, I guess, a more comprehensive look at both the weekly case count, the two-week positivity rate, and the average rate per 100 fat. And those numbers are all getting back down to a much more palatable level, almost back to early November. So hopefully we continue this trend downward over the coming weeks. This data is lagging a bit, it's through February 12th. Final update of the evening, we've exceeded 91% of eligible residents with at least one dose. 80% of residents are considered fully vaccinated, and 47% of those have received a booster dose. So we continue to see over 100 in each category, and hopefully that continues as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? No questions or comments, please continue. Mr. Mizikar into Financial Business Fiscal Projection 1 presentation.
So, Board members, I don't plan to go into a detailed presentation this evening because we provided a great deal of detail with regards to what the budget targets at your last meeting. There have been no substantial changes from your meeting on Tuesday, February 8th, and when we published that budget on Friday, February 11th. I am very pleased and would like to thank the Assistant to the Town Manager, Alex Martinez, for all her work on this year's budget document and the creation of our first-ever digital budget book. That digital budget book is available on the town's financial information webpage, which is located off of the Town Manager's webpage. It's really an interactive document this year, narrative integrated in with various charts and graphs. Residents can select, expand, collapse information, the whole way down to the line item level, or stay at a very high level, and look at summary trends through functional areas or department levels. And it's really a significant transformation that we've undertaken together, the Manager's Office and the Board, since the fiscal year 2019 budget. So we'll continue to work on that, but I think this year's budget will put us in a really good spot to actually apply for and likely receive the Government Finance Officers' Association Distinctual Budget Award. I believe we meet all criteria, but beyond that, more important than the award, I think it's a very transparent budget. Residents are able to get the information that they need to understand how we're spending their tax dollars. So I'm happy to answer any questions relative to the budget. There are budget hearings coming up with the Finance Committee in detail on March 24th and 26th, Thursday and Saturday, but again, happy to answer any questions this evening that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Any questions or comments?
Just one question.
Mr. DePaul.
There's no more current information from the state, right? I can have that for a while.
Yeah, I wouldn't expect to see any updates really until the House submits a budget, which is sometime middle of October.
Didn't the Governor submit another budget for some extra money for Chapter 90?
Yep, so the Governor has submitted a supplemental budget to provide $100 million in additional winter maintenance aid for roadways. If they follow the same formula, that the general Chapter 90 dollars are issued, Chapter 90 on an annual basis is a $200 million bill, and we get about $990,000, so I'm anticipating roughly half of that, so almost $500,000 in additional road aid, which is much needed. And since you brought that up, you know, we have tried to continue to maintain the roads the best we can. We know that some areas are in really rough shape. We've had a lot of very warm days and a lot of very, very cold days, so there's a lot of frost heaves and a lot of potholes, and we fill a pothole and we use hot mix, and it doesn't get a chance to set up very well because it gets really cold really fast and, you know, it reoccurs. So that's the cycle that we're in. It is normal for this year, but we're challenged a little bit more this year really because we've had days in the 60s and days below zero. So we are working at it, as much hot mix asphalt that we can get from plants in the area when they open, we do do that. We're sorry for those conditions, but we're doing everything we can to maintain them and put more permanent fixes in place in the spring.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment. I'm just really grateful to Alex Martinez for all of her work. When I saw the weather this evening, and I realized that I didn't have to try to juggle the budget book and the umbrella and get out to the car, like, I was so excited because I just love having that whole thing online. I just think it's so much easier to navigate it, and I really hope that the public takes an opportunity to look through. One of the things that I thought is most useful is when you go to like the main page of a budget section for a department, there's a pie chart, and then there's also the percent increase or decrease for that budget as compared to last year, and I just think it makes it so much easier because it's just right there at your fingertips, and then you go right into the breakdown. So she did a great job, I'm really happy with it, and just grateful for her efforts.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, move on to the next item. Agenda under New Business, to review an act on the land disposition agreement with Civicco Development for 1-7 Maple Avenue, the former Beal School. Colleagues, by way of background, at our meeting on January 25th, we had a presentation to us, an overview of the summary of the Beal Commons, or Beal Reuse originally, the establishment of a reuse committee, then an RFP committee, then the review of the proposal and in light of project requirements and steps moving forward. There was a very detailed summary and setting forth of various documents that are available for a public review. At the same hearing, we also summarized a lot of the comments that we had received at our December 7th hearing, together with emails that we received also by letters. And at that meeting on January 25th, we had directed Mr. Mizikar to proceed within parameters of negotiation to really cover those three major themes that had been presented through the correspondence and at the public hearing. And what we had asked him to do was to engage in further negotiations with Civicco to increase open space, an increase in public parking, and decrease in the number of apartments. Mr. Mizikar has engaged in ongoing discussions. When we set this agenda item last Thursday, we had to do 48 hours in advance of the meeting because of the holiday on Monday, it was a day earlier than usual. Discussions were ongoing at that point, and they still are. So when we had set the agenda, we knew there was the possibility that discussions would be ongoing, and they are. So there's not a land disposition agreement in front of us for review or approval at this point, but at this, would also, so that's where we are, current status. At this point, I'd like to ask Mr. Mizikar though to provide an update as to where we are since the January 25th meeting.
Yep, so as Mr. Samia noted, we have made significant progress in our negotiations. We're moving in the direction that the Board has asked us, which is to find a way to lessen the number of units, increase open space, and maintain or increase adequate parking for the site. I can tell you, we're very strongly moving in those directions, and I look forward to bringing the Board various matters within those three buckets to consider when we consider the land disposition agreement, and I think those are relatively well, you know, tentatively settled, I'll call them. And then what we're still really working on is those final details, legal details of the document that really put some latches into the agreement where we have to make some decisions, and when the developer is required to meet certain financial obligations or timelines for permitting, where the documents will be filed, you know, for perpetuity, so everyone's aware of what's going to happen with the project, and it can be well communicated to the Planning Board when they get to that stage. So a lot of progress has been made, and we will be back at the meeting on March 8th with the final document for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the hard work on this. As one who negotiates agreements on a regular basis, there are a lot of details in any type of agreement, and even as a subset of these parameters that we directed you on, I can only imagine the level of detail in terms of covenants and the like that need to go in. So thanks for that, and we look forward to March 8th. So if there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Next item is to review an act to authorize the Town Manager to enter into an agreement with a consultant for consulting services for diversity, equity, and inclusion. Colleagues, as you recall, back in mid-October, the task force had presented to us their report, and we've had a couple of workshops since that time. We have been searching for a consultant to assist us with this matter. Originally, we started going out through our professional network, as well as reaching out to other municipalities for referrals, and we have, the end of 2021 was very busy and hard to get in touch, but we've had a very productive set of conversations during some recent workshops. We have proposals in front of us as well. All have had the opportunity to speak with the consultants that are backing up these proposals, and what we're looking for is really assistance to help review the recommendations and help us evaluate and what would just move forward with implementing, how would implement those recommendations, and draw on experience in an area that we haven't done this before. So that's at least a broad overview is what we'd look for them to help us do. I think that as we move forward in this process, what we've heard from a lot of the consultants is that a lot of the work will define itself as we hit the ground initially, starting with the consultant. So we have, there were two consultants that we've talked to recently. We had Tangible Development and Visions that had presented to us, and all of us had an opportunity to ask questions. But now, seeing where the Board is in terms of which consultant they'd like to move forward, and assuming that we have a consultant we'd like to move forward with to authorize the Town Manager to negotiate that consulting agreement. Any questions or comments regarding the consultants and where we're at? Mr. DePaul.
After listening to the two consultants and reading through their information and their bios and all that goes along with that, I personally was most comfortable with Visions for two reasons. One reason is I was impressed with the depth and the years of experience in the organization by multiple members. And the other thing is I liked the approach that Visions, with the way they approached the process, and I thought it was very people and interaction-oriented as opposed to organizationally-oriented. I just could have sensed it was more people-to-people, and I thought I saw more flexibility in Visions than with Tangible. I thought Tangible was good, I just think for this kind of a thing, as I, kind of a product, as I listened to both companies, I thought, the more they got into it, the more I realized how complicated doing this kind of a project is. And I just felt, I, in my opinion, the way Visions brings it forward, it's a little bit, I guess, more organic, where it starts out at personal, interpersonal, and it kind of spreads out. And I, I just felt a lot more comfortable with their proposed approach as opposed to something that was, seemed a little bit more rigid to me, but anyways, that's where I am.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, I'll share my thoughts. I think that, I'm a consultant by trade, so my approach to hiring consultants, it's a lot like hiring an employee or a teammate, so you're really looking at the personal contribution. This is not a product that's manufactured, you know, so to speak. So with that said, I thought both organizations are very good at what they do, but I don't disagree that Visions, I think, appear to be able to guide us and provide the advice that we are seeking to really make sure that we launch a DEI effort in this town that is really going to challenge us effectively, as well as guide us to engaging the community in a very effective way. So I would support engaging with Visions as we launch this effort.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. LeBeau.
Not to prolong or say the same things that my colleagues stated, I thought we had two excellent candidates, which is always, it's always good to have that kind of rule in front of you. Some of it just comes down to gut reaction. I just felt that Visions would work better with us and work better with the town, so I am supportive of moving ahead with Visions.
Great, thank you. Other comments?
I would agree that Visions, I think their, their plan and their scope of work fits more with what I was thinking we would be getting from a consultant. Also, I think that they're more looking to do in-person work as opposed to virtual work, and that piece was very important to me. I think we need someone that's going to be in person. So that has me leaning toward Visions also.
Thank you. Yeah, I think you've covered everything. The only two other things I'd add, I want to thank the consultants for their time and spending part of their busy schedule with us. The excitement that we saw from the consultant from Visions was infectious. I think that both consulting firms were great, but the excitement and the desire to potentially even broaden the scope of the report that was presented to us, and the ease in which you'd be able to help us look at other things, I think were great. And the other piece that I saw with Visions is the ability to help us incorporate recommendations that we move forward with into a strategic plan, to ensure the vibrancy of what we're doing going forward, that it's lasting, it's not just taking a report, recommendations, but it's incorporating us in the fabric of who we are in our strategic plan for 2030. So I agree with all of you, I thank you for taking the time to speak with all of these consultants, and Visions is also uniquely positioned to start almost immediately for us, which is great as well. So you've covered everything else. That being said, what's the pleasure of the Board? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board into, enter into an agreement with Visions, Inc., to serve as consultant for our DEI work.
And just to clarify, that's to authorize the Town Manager?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Exactly what I.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Next item on the agenda is to review an act to set the date, time, and location for the annual town meeting on Saturday, May 21st, 2022, at 8:30 a.m. at Oak Middle School. Mr. Mizikar, any thoughts on that, the timeline or anything, or?
So the timeline certainly meets the requirements that are within the revised general bylaws at this point in time, and we will be prepared to bring you a draft warrant at your next meeting, and have you sign the warrant, your second meeting in March.
Great, and the thought too, to have it on a Saturday, the, realizing that everyone has very busy schedules, to have the possibility of getting done in one day as we have had the last couple Saturdays, and the attendance has been terrific, and the, some of the comments that I hear is it allows for people to plan, that they know it's one day, even if it turns out to be a really long day, they have it Saturday on their calendar. If we do it on the Monday evening going forward, we're not entirely sure how many evenings it is, and we do know that participation does decline over time due to busy schedules that people have. So that's, that is good, so at this point, we need a motion just to set that date.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, Mr. DePaul.
So where is it going to be held?
Oak Middle School.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about acoustics like we did in the gym?
That was tough.
Really tough, especially with that blower in the back of us.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Sorry, I should have asked that. They're on any, is there a motion?
Move we set annual town meeting from May 21st, 2022, 8:30 a.m. at Oak Middle School.
Second. Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is to review an act to sign the housing choice designation application. I'd ask Ms. Kristen Lass, our Assistant Town Manager, to take us actually through the next two items, but let's start with this one first, please.
Sure. Good evening, Board members. Kristen Lass, Assistant Town Manager. Thank you for considering the town of Shrewsbury to review and perhaps sign the housing choice designation application. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts came out with a housing choice designation for municipalities a few years ago, and what that means is if a municipality meets certain criteria related to housing and housing production, that they are afforded several things from the Commonwealth, one being points on certain grant programs such as MassWorks and Complete Streets or MassDOT grants. Some receive half a point, half a percentage discount on our state revolving fund loans. We use those for water and sewer projects, as well as have exclusive access to housing choice capital grants, and we provided a link to what that means, but many municipalities over the past three years have accessed those for both capital programs as well as planning programs. In the past, since the housing choice designation was an option, the Planning and Economic Development Department reviewed it on a yearly basis, and the town of Shrewsbury did not meet the criteria for several reasons. This year, for several factors, we actually do meet the criteria. We do have at least 5% or 500 units produced over the last five years, and that was helped greatly by the Edmire Crossing Project. We also now have an Affordable Housing Trust, and that has been set up, so that is one of the criteria that we have missed over the past few years. The other criteria or best practices that we have is we have at least one zoning district that allows multifamily units by right. We have inclusionary zoning, which we've had since 2006. We have zoning that allows mixed-use residential development, like the Lakeway Overlay District, the Route 20 District, and the Town Center District. We have zoning that allows for accessory dwelling units by right, which we now do in the Town Center District. We have, like I said before, established the Affordable Housing Trust and Trust Fund, and that we have provided evidence that we educate and train a majority of our members on our land use boards, the Planning Board and Zoning Board, over the last five years, and many of those members do attend the trainings put out by the state and community housing items. And then the last one is that we have adopted local option property tax relief for eligible seniors, or have adopted a community impact fee for short-term rentals, which we have not, but we have adopted that community tax relief for seniors. So this evening, we would request that the Board sign our application for review by the state. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I'm confident that we will be in a good position moving forward on additional grant programs for MassWorks and other capital grants if we do move forward, and I don't see any downfall, there's no restrictions that I could see from reviewing the program or the Planning Department reviewing the program if we do enter into this.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. DePaul.
Ms. Lass, do we have to apply for that every year?
No.
Once we get the designation, it's?
The designation is good for a five-year period, so we'd have to recertify after five years.
Okay, thank you. Good. Any other questions? Can I just ask one clarifying question? Who are we authorizing to sign it? Is it me?
The chairperson.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Any further?
Chairman?
Yes, Mr. LeBeau.
I move the Board authorize the Chair to sign the certification and signature document relative to the housing choice designation application.
Second. Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item, also I'd ask Mrs. Lass to go through, is to review an act on the request for the May 2022 Annual Town Meeting Zoning Bylaw Amendment articles dated February 3rd, 2022, from Mr. Bernard Cahill, Director of Planning and Economic Development. Mrs. Lass.
Great, thank you. This is a traditional request every February from the Planning Board. We've done a comprehensive review of the, we, meaning the Planning and Economic Development Department, has done a comprehensive review of the zoning bylaw and has determined with consultation with the Planning Board that there are four areas where they would like to focus to amend the bylaw this year. The areas are noted in a letter dated February 3rd, 2022, to your Board from Bernard Cahill, Director of Planning and Economic Development. We are still in the development of the actual article language, as that does take some time, but the four areas are to amend a section related to continued existing uses of the zoning bylaw related to single and two-family dwellings. There was a state case law that allows a special permit rather than a variance to enhance or enlarge single-family or duplexes. There's an action to request slopes to be inserted within our site plan approval process. We've had a number of Planning Board site plan approvals in which slopes have been an area of contention or issues that the developer does not feel that they have to address, but the Planning Board is trying to address. This will give some teeth to that matter. Another area where they're asking for clarification within the zoning bylaw is related to screening within the limited industrial zoning district. Should there be a screening requirement or not when there's a series of limited industrial businesses along a corridor, and do they each need to screen from each other? We're still working through that language. And then finally, excuse me, there's, there's two others. Cleaning up our common driveway criteria for common driveway special permits. Right now, there is a requirement related to the zoning districts that the common driveways are located, and the Planning and Economic Development Department and Planning Board feel that it's best to actually relate that to the use and not the actual zoning district related to what the criteria are for a common driveway related to a residential use versus a commercial use. And then finally, putting an item within the zoning bylaw to authorize the town clerk to help clean up the bylaw if there are certain numbering or naming conventions that we don't have to go back to town meeting every time, there might be that clerical error. And Mr. Cahill will certainly be back before this Board to clarify the language as it's developed by his department and the Planning Board over time related to the town meeting warrants. But we request that you send your standard letter back to the Planning Board that they can begin to hold their public, advertise and hold the public hearings related to the zoning bylaw requests. the zoning bylaw requests.
Any questions or comments?
Sorry.
Mr. DePaulo.
I thought it was gonna be quick. Ms. Lass, enlarging the residential units, is that, I know you're, they're working it out, but is that to put an in-law apartment on, or just to enlarge an existing unit, either single or multifamily, just to be able to enlarge it without having to go through the variance and all that?
Correct. A single-family or duplex, not to create an additional unit.
Okay. So, as a follow-up to that, we didn't yet, and correct me if I'm wrong, allow in-law uses as a matter of right, correct?
Correct. In-law uses were, are, were always a special permit until we changed the town center zoning.
The town center zoning, but the rest of the town doesn't have it?
In-law apartments are allowed by special permit in the other residential zoning districts in town.
Right. Are we moving in that direction, or something a little more lenient, so?
I think that's the, the thought process is to explore accessory dwelling units versus in-law apartment units, but that's a larger conversation.
However, do it, because in my age cohort, I hear a lot of people, almost, almost weekly, people saying, you know, looking to downsize and can't do it, or it doesn't make sense, because if I downsize and I want to stay in Shrewsbury, I'm gonna pay as much money for the downsized unit as my existing house. And it really, it has to be becoming more of a problem, particularly after the prices jumped in the past two years. There were people who would like to stay in town, maybe, who knows, they could have lived here all their life, or they want to be close to their kids, so. I know there was, there was a lot of controversy on that, because people didn't want, people are building in law, and then two years down the road, somebody who's in this, not in law, but anyways, okay, thank you. Screening in between commercial, is that required now?
It is, yes. So we're trying to be less restrictive with that.
And what's the, the common driveway, is it, is that pertaining to like the situation where somebody wanted a common driveway that crossed a residential into a commercial? Is that, is that it?
It's for a use, right? And it's also to, there's a specific fire code that requires a certain width, and we currently don't have that width within our zoning bylaw, so it kind of conflicts with what the fire code is trying to accomplish as well, so.
So the common drive is gonna be tied to the use of, where the common drive is going?
That is correct, yes.
Good, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Don, is there a motion? Mr. LeBeau.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board approve the request from Town Planner Cahill, and we inform him that we will be putting these articles on the agenda for the annual town meeting, so the Planning Board hearing process may commence.
Second. I've been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Next item on the agenda is to review an act on the one-day all alcohol license request of Joe Youssef, St. Mary's Syrian Orthodox Church, for a birthday party from 7:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. on March 5th, 2022.
Move approval.
Second. I've been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to review an act on the appointment of Krista Louder, 3 Ryan Road, to the Conservation Commission to fill a vacant seat for the term to expire on June 30th, 2022, pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 40, Section 8C.
Move approval.
Second. I've been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to review an act on the letter from the Department of Housing and Community Development, giving the 40B comprehensive permit for 409 South Street. Mrs. Lass.
Sure, thank you. Board members will recall that several months ago, several weeks ago, you entered into a joint application with Gray Star Development for a local initiative program, application to the Department of Housing and Community Development for an over-55, 40B housing project at 409 South Street. Gray Star did submit that application to DHCD, and as part of their review process, they do ask for any comments from municipality or other interested parties within 30 days of the application process. So we did receive a letter from DHCD asking if we did have any comments. I just wanted to discuss with the board this evening if they'd like to just submit a simple letter that they're still in agreement with the application as it was submitted, and don't see any issues with that, and are still in discussions related to the development agreement. As an aside, as part of that lip application process, today, DHCD came to the town of Shrewsbury and visited 409 South Street with the developer, and myself, the Assistant Town Planner, the DPW Director, and the Building Inspector accompanied them on that site walk, and DHCD expressed that they were very grateful that the town of Shrewsbury sent representation, as they don't often see that, and they were appreciative of the cooperation and support that we were providing for this project. So in summary, we would ask if the board would like to consider just sending a letter to DHCD stating that we are still in agreement and support of the lip application as filed.
Thank you. Any questions or comment?
So moved.
I'm thinking. Second.
I've been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, to review an act on an address change request for 186 220 Boston Turnpike to change to 188 Boston Turnpike, 196 Boston Turnpike, with further assignment of suite numbers, and 200 Boston Turnpike from Attorney Richard Ricker. Been asked to take that off this, this agenda, and we'll take it up at a future meeting, so we will move on from item number 15. Item number 16, is to review an act on an address change request for 360 Hartford Turnpike Building 1, Units 1 and 2, 360 Hartford Turnpike Building 2, and 360 Hartford Turnpike Building 3, Units 1 and 2, to change to 360 Hartford Turnpike, Units 1 and 2, 362 Hartford Turnpikes, Units 1 and 2, and 364 Hartford Turnpike, and this is a request from Stephen and Julie Venencasa. This is, requested made in accordance with our policy number 29, and we've heard also from, in our drive, just the various departments as required per our policy. The issue that I understand this is that typically, it's one parcel of property and it's not subdivided, so we do not usually change, we do not change the numbers on that, the assessor's office doesn't have that capability and assigns one address to one property, is my understanding of the issue, but Mrs. Lass, just anything further to that?
No, that is correct, Mr. Samia, and the assessor and the Planning Department commented on the formal application form that the request is inconsistent with the current policy. We cannot change, the addresses without three individual lots, and there's only one lot with three individual buildings.
Okay. And then the alternative is just to have a larger signed Building 1, Building 2, and Building 3 on the, on the, with the 360 Hartford Turnpike address?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
So would a motion to deny the request be in order?
Based on from the assessor's?
Based upon the recommendation, that's what I see.
Yes, sir.
Move we deny the request.
Second. I've been moved in second, and all those in favor to deny the request say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We are in correspondence. An email dated, so, email dated February 7th, 2022, from Stephen Pol, 24 Francis Ave, regarding Yale School, so noted. Next item is email dated February 8th, 2022, from John Giaruso, 8 Ryan Road, regarding Western Board of Health voting to list, lift citywide mask mandates, so noted. Next item, number 19, email dated February 9th, 2022, from Jordan Rubin, 9 Bunker Hill Road, regarding indoor mask mandate, so noted. Next item, 20, email dated February 10th, 2022, from Aaron Ryan, 37 Dearfield Road, regarding the mask mandate, so noted. Next item, 21, email dated February 10th, 2022, from Tom Demigella, Social Justice Chair of the Italian-American Alliance, regarding Keep Columbus Day and why, so noted. Next item is email dated February 15th, 2022, from Sandy Berger, President of the Shrewsbury Rotary Club, a letter from the president, which I will ask Mrs. Cassavan to provide more information on this, she is a member of the Rotary Club, and if she could give us more details regarding the letter that we received and what's being requested.
Thank you, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
As a member of the Rotary Club, I'm really excited about this opportunity. The letter is in reference to the, to locating what's called a community fridge, and a community fridge, for those who might not know, is exactly what it sounds like. It's a garage refrigerator that gets put into a shed-like structure, and the refrigerator is on one side, and then there's a pantry on the other side, and community members are asked to donate food, or if people are food insecure, they're able to go and get food as needed, and this would be sponsored by the Rotary Club, but in practice, it's a grassroots approach to addressing food insecurity in a way that is separate from something like a food pantry, it's a supplement. So the reason why the request is, is coming to our board is because the Rotary Club is looking to locate the community fridge next to the senior center, so it would be on the municipal campus, and is asking that the town allow that to be placed there. We have a local person who's a carpenter, who's willing to build the shed for us, and the Rotary Club would be responsible for the upkeep, making sure that the area was kept clean and neat, making sure that the snow was cleared and, and it was sufficiently salted so that people wouldn't get hurt in the wintertime, but we really do think that this is the proper location for a couple of reasons. One, I think people would feel safe coming at any hour of the day to the municipal campus if they were in need of food. Also, because I think that there, we think that there is a need in the senior community, and maybe less of a willingness to ask for help, and it makes it very easy for seniors who might need some food to be able to utilize that fridge when they're visiting the senior center. It's on the bus route, the number 15 bus goes by here, the WRTA, so that makes it convenient for people. It's also flat, so easy, easily to walk to this area as well, and in the warmer months, the farmer market is right there, and what a great way for vendors to unload some of the food that's left over if they're not looking to bring it back with them, and we know that it would be well-used by the community. So the Rotary Club is just asking to be able to locate the refrigerator on town property, and the cost is, for the electricity, and asking that the town partner with us in covering that cost, which we estimate to be about $60 a year to run the fridge. And so that's the request.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mr. DePaulo.
Ms. Cassavan talked to me about this a few weeks ago, and some of the pictures I initially saw, I was not, not for the way this one was gonna be built, but I was a little skeptical on it, but there is one of these in Northborough, very close to the, to the center, and I did visit it, and it was clean. It looked like it was well-maintained, the refrigerator was clean, the area was clean, and it looks like when it's done right, it, it, it probably could do what it's intended to do, and help people, so I think it's worth a try. I, I, I do have two questions, though. Did I see, are we gonna be insured on this? Do we have any other?
The Rotary Club has insurance.
Okay.
So, the Rotary Club has made sure that we would be covered under our insurance.
The Rotary Club will be insured, but is the town, does the town need to be indemnified on it, like a certificate of insurance, or not listed as a co? It's just you list, you just add it on the bottom, that you're, you're a co, I forgot, you just do it all the time at work.
Additional insured.
Yeah, additional insured. I think that, that's important, just because of the way the world is, and I just had one question, I think it's more an operational question, is so, when whoever is, is working to maintain this deal, somebody's gonna look at the food and make sure?
Yes.
It's not at a quote.
So, the idea behind it, and I think you mentioned, you know, there's five in Worcester, the ones in Worcester are, I mean, they're, they're beautiful if that's what you were looking for, for your community, because they have local artists that painted on them, right? The one in Northborough, as you mentioned, doesn't have that, we're not looking to do that here. The idea is for it to not be obtrusive, like we want it to kind of be inconspicuous, so that it's not screaming, you know, "community fridge." You know, people will know that it's there who need it, and it's going to be run, so the ones in Worcester and the ones in Northborough are all run through a closed Facebook group, so you have people join this group and then take on the responsibility for the fridge in a grassroots kind of way, and part of that is if you're going to clean the fridge, and you notice that there's things there that are spoiled or out of date or shouldn't be there, then you need to remove them.
Yep.
And I think also, even if you were donating, I know myself, I donate to the one in Northborough frequently, if I see something there that shouldn't be there, I just grab it, it's kind of just like a Good Samaritan kind of thing to do, and, you know, we all are responsible for upkeep, but there will be point people that are responsible had, if there were to be something that was amiss and needed to be dealt with immediately.
Yeah, I, I certainly think it was a try.
Any other questions, comments?
Do you mind if I ask a question, just a technical question? Does this require our vote to move forward?
It's operational, I'd just say the town manager could do it.
Agreed, okay. May I ask?
No, please, of course.
Just a note, I think this is amazing, and I really applaud the Rotary Club for taking this initiative, and I'm very grateful for it, so thank you.
Yeah, I think it's great, I'm really excited about it. We're hoping that, you know, with this coming before the board and making sure that everyone's aware of it, that we can aim for opening it in May or June, but it's, it's exciting. It's, it's nice to see the community get so excited about something positive. It's such a small thing, I mean, I have kids, and anybody that has kids knows that what they like today is not what they're gonna like tomorrow, and then you have like a lot of it, and, you know, I just take those things and I bring them to the community fridge, and it's just, you feel good about knowing that you're helping someone else.
I think it's great, you know, so I have a tendency to, you get a sale, and it's buy 10 of them and you use one, so it's my coverage.
Who does that?
Yeah, but I think it's, I think it's fantastic, the, so thanks for bringing it, thanks to the Rotary Club for this. I think the word that you said a few times, "community," and I think Shrewsbury is truly a special community, and this is, fits right in with providing opportunities to help our neighbors, our friends, our families, and do it, as you said, inconspicuously, so there's no, it's just an opportunity to get some assistance. We know that it's tough times for a lot of people, so I think it's great, so thank you. And the only other thing, too, on insurance, great question, worst case, let's say that we weren't an additional insured, I think our general liability policy would adequately protect us without any additional protection, so I think we're covered anyways, but I think it's great, so look forward to seeing it and getting it started, so thank you.
Thank you.
Insurance is to be part of my job, making sure we're covered.
I.
Well, yeah, I'll make sure, I'll, I'll check with Rotary Club, but I'll also figure it out with Ms. Mizikar.
I don't think it's a big deal, I just. Oh, no, you're right, and today's, you have to, but it's great.
We had checked on it on our end, but didn't really think of it from the other perspective.
It's just listing as an additional co-insured or something on the bottom.
We'll make sure, thank you, I really do appreciate the support of this board for this initiative, we're really excited about it.
Good. Just a few more items, so email dated February 15th, 2022, from Christina Mano, 7 Shirley Road, regarding request for proclamation under Policy 30, so we'll get that done for March 4th, for pickup for the Eagle Scout Ceremony on March 5th, which we've all been invited to, so, so noted. Email dated February 16th, 2022, from Tom Demigella, Chairman of the Italian-American Alliance to Save Columbus Day of the Italian-American Alliance, regarding suggestion regarding Columbus Day, so noted, and the last item on correspondence, number 25, email dated February 16th, 2022, from Matt Beaton, 41 Surry Lane, regarding masking the children. That is it that we have for the formal part of the agenda, if there's nothing else that members would like to discuss, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. I've been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, we will see you on March 8th. Have a good night.